Good evening and welcome to the Danvers Planning Board Meeting of December 13th, 2022. First live meeting with our new member, Tim Spittle. Welcome, Tim. And first item on the agenda this evening, 367 Maple Street, request by NVA Veterinary Management, Inc. for endorsement of an approval not required plan for 367 Maple Street assessors map 25 lot 24. The property is located in the residential three, R3 zoning district.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant NVA Veterinary Management, Inc., as well as the current owners of the property, George and Marion Myers. And we are requesting endorsement of this plan as an A&R plan which divides the existing almost four acre parcel into two lots. This division that's shown is consistent with the site plan approval that this board granted back in October for renovations to the Danvers Animal Hospital. The animal hospital is shown on lot two on this A&R plan and lot one is the existing dwelling. That dwelling is an 1800s, mid 1800s historic dwelling and while the applicants had originally proposed to demolish that house as part of the alterations and renovations to the animal hospital, in working with the Preservation Commission as well as the Historic District Commission, we were able to save the historic section of the house, which is the main core of the house and the L that goes out the back. And in so doing, we are proposing to create two lots so that the historic dwelling can be sold and occupied as a residential dwelling and not remain as part of an animal hospital property. So we did receive from the Board of Appeals frontage area and setback variances back in November, which allows us to proceed forward with this plan. Lot one has 91.82 feet of frontage on Old Maple Street and the lot itself has 15,066 square feet. And on that will be the historic dwelling. The remainder of the property will be the animal hospital property. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board. Lou?
Yeah, just the, so Attorney McKinnon, I guess you're just, you're mentioning in terms of the ZBA, the ZBA approval, that was really, that was the necessary piece really that was needed before being able to come here with the A&R?
Correct.
Okay. Because they were able to, because the, you got the variance in terms of the frontage?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Jean?
No, I don't have any questions.
Tim?
No questions.
Tori Adler, our other member is not here this evening and he's not online. So it's just the four of us. Question, just for information so that the board members know, where we had the entire site initially, you had the home and then maybe a business in the home that's expanded now. What is the zoning on that area as far as, since we're separating off the home and now we just have the business? Is that highway corridor over there? How do we?
No, this is all R2.
So it's R2, but we grandfathered the use?
The animal hospital itself is a grandfathered use. And the Board of Appeals, in addition to the variances, granted a finding to alter the lot size of the nonconforming use.
So the use is, was grandfathered because it maybe, did it predate zoning or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it predated the change in zoning on that. The animal hospital was begun back in the early 60s.
Okay.
When this was permitted by Dr. Rivers, I believe, and then Dr. Myers, who many of you know, purchased from Dr. Rivers in the 80s.
So going forward, would it be considered a nonprofit type use or just a grandfathered use? I guess?
It's not nonprofit. It is a grandfathered veterinary hospital.
Okay.
I would say, I'd maybe say preexisting nonconforming use.
Right.
Preexisting nonconforming use.
Yeah.
Just, just to kind of educate the board and myself as to, you know, the zoning. You wouldn't be able to do it today in that site.
Correct.
That's right.
In that location.
Not by right, that's correct. Yes.
To the board, just for informational purposes, both parcel, the original parcel was, was or is residential three and they're both going to remain residential three.
Oh, I said R2, didn't I?
Yes.
I meant R3. Sorry about that.
So that's how it came to be in that area. That's just for information. But as far as the approval not required, just for Tim's sake, you know, we look at it, you didn't probably know that this had already come before us with the site plan, but oftentimes, you know, this is just part of what they're doing with the development of the, of the site. But also on the A&R, it's really kind of a formality for us. Once it goes through the staff and we see that the plan is drawn correctly, it's got everything on the plan that's required, it would be very hard for us not to approve it in the sense that, you know, they're not asking for a subdivision approval. The only, really, they're just showing that they meet the requirements of separating off the lot.
Josh helpfully provided the, the plan from the September 27th meeting. I watched the YouTube video.
Great.
And it was mentioned there, this whole process, get the CBA variance, then come here for A&R. So all very clear. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience? Not that, we don't take audience input on these because they're administrators. Typically, unless there's a crowd with pitchforks and torches. So Lou, I would have you read the decision.
Absolutely. Motion to approve the request by NVA Veterinary Management, Inc. for endorsement of an approval not required A&R plan for 367 Maple Street assessors map 25 lot 24. The property is located in the residential three, R3 zoning district.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have the Mylar? Okay. And that will be signed hopefully tonight. Great. And I can pick it up from you maybe tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Second item on the agenda, Overlook Drive and Hilltop Road, Hilltop Estates, Folly Hills subdivision lots one through six and lots 16 to 28. Discussion on the irrevocable standby letter of credit number CMI 16092.
One moment, just, I'm just trying to share something. So this subdivision at the, at this geographic location has been under construction since the early 2000s. All of the houses have been built. Unfortunately, the subdivision, the road and the infrastructure associated with it is, is not complete. The developer has submitted a letter to our office. It was in the fall of 2021 saying that they didn't have the resources to finish the subdivision, the financial resources. We've been, we've had a couple of meetings with the development team about what's the next step, what we want to do. It's sort of a, you know, this isn't necessarily a common occurrence. So there is a letter of credit from the North Shore Bank, which is the surety to complete the subdivision for lots, like on the, on the plan shown, lots one through six and 16 through 28. The developer has essentially said that they're not going to complete the subdivision work and essentially has requested that the board or the town draws down and, or calls in, calls in the surety to, in order for us as the town to essentially complete the infrastructure associated with the subdivision. So it's not the best situation, but that's where we're at. So the first step in this is essentially, there's a decision in the packet, but we could obviously talk through it and answer questions as best I can. To essentially, the board is saying that going to find that, you know, the subdivision's not complete and we're requesting the funding. And then once we get the funding, we'll work with town staff to, you know, do, try and finish, try and finish it as best we can or get to a good, to a good point. So just for informational purposes, there is another financial, another financial instrument for another, for other lots associated with the subdivision, but this is just the first step in this sort of process that we're trying to bring this to some sort of closure and as best possible. So happy to answer questions.
So I'm familiar with this location and being on the board for so long and this subdivision took forever and ever and ever to finally get completed. And the developer unfortunately was notorious for not completing work, especially the, the work that was required per the bonds. I guess the main question is, is the 75,000 enough to cover what remains?
So it's 45,000 now.
Okay.
That's an interesting question.
Do we have a bond estimate, a current bond estimate?
Well, there's, it's based on 2018 numbers. So there's an inflation piece to it. But at the time, in 2018, there was a, I'd say at this point, where, as from a town perspective, that the most kind of important or crucial item at the moment is the, and I put the inspection report in the packet was, is related to the, the water booster station, which basically, you know, because the topography here, it's sending water to the 40 plus homes and there's, there's currently some issues with the, the booster station. So that's why there's sort of, there is a sort of sense of urgency a little bit with this in order to fix that booster station as, as soon as possible.
So for the record, what is the repair cost of the fixing of the water booster station?
Not like on paper or at the, at the, I'm not sure if that inspection report in the packet says the number.
No, it doesn't.
But it could potentially, it's probably close to that, probably, but in, just speaking verbally with a town engineer, I believe it's, it could potentially be in that 30, 40 range probably. It likely would, there's a chance it could take all of that, this 45. So.
Has all the roadway work been done that needs to be done, the streets and so on? Has that all been done?
So.
Sidewalks, streets?
So at the time in 2018, when the 45, the original 45, how that number came to be, there was booster station, the booster station even at that time had a couple, had several items associated with it, mechanical items. On the lots that are described, one through six and 16 to 28, the stone bounds, I believe, have not been installed. There's supposed to be an access road to one of the reservoirs for the, for the drainage. The as-bills haven't been produced. So the, the financial piece could be, yeah, there's a chance that it's not enough. Yes, for sure. So.
So I guess, so what normally happens when a subdivision is completed for the benefit of the board, once it's done, then the town, you know, has these covenants that are recorded and we release the covenants so that they can sell the houses when workers, have all the covenants been released for all the lots?
I'm not.
Because if you had a final sale, you would have had to release, the town would have had to release the town covenant to have the sale. So why would we release that covenant if, if we didn't get paid? You know what I mean?
Sure.
Because they can say that, whatever they want to say about the market has been crazy high over the last several years. And it strikes me as hard to believe they didn't make money in the end on these lots. But that being said, if the town released all the covenants, but not, you know, the roadways, it would seem to me that we haven't accepted those streets.
No, we have not.
So normally, the developer would still have to plow them.
And.
Take trash and even pay for the electricity for the lights. I don't know what level we're doing any of those.
Probably, as we speak, we're probably doing all of those things. But that's a different kind of macro level town slash DPW policy that I guess we could put in a different bucket for the moment. But I, I guess I hear what you're saying.
Because that's our leverage on the developer.
Right.
And, and the, you know, the taxpayers are paying taxes and they obviously want to get those types of benefits. But normally, until and unless the developer does everything that he is or she is supposed to do, we don't accept the street.
Yeah, we have, we have not. These, these are not, these are not public streets.
And therefore, if we don't accept the street, we don't plow the street, we don't pick trash and we don't light the street normally.
I don't know if that's necessarily true, but I guess at some level, that could be a carrot or a stick, right? Kind of how you're describing. I think that there is, without, you know, speaking out of turn, I believe, there, the plowing thing gets difficult when people start living in the houses.
Well.
The trash piece is a kind of a DPW policy that I guess where I sit. I, our office doesn't make that decision, but.
But the developer can plow the street. If there's one house built, the town usually doesn't, you know, I can understand you've got 48, was it 48 houses?
I think it's 40.
40 houses? I think it's 48 because they tried, they came for 50. We cut back two and we were involved in a big lawsuit.
I guess if you, yeah.
You count, you count the other side.
If you start counting the ones on the end of broadly and the ends of, right.
The entire subdivision was 50. We cut it back to 48. Everyone got sued and then it was settled. But this has been going on, like you said, for 20 years.
So I.
I just think, you know, is there still leverage? Has the town council been involved in this? You know, to say that some of these players don't have money in the trust or don't have money is, is hard to believe for me personally, because I know some of these players, just being a real estate attorney.
Yeah.
In town.
No, I completely understand.
So I'm wondering if pressure has been put on them, if our bill comes to 100 grand and we got 45.
So as I sort of mentioned, there is another, there is another financial institute, financial instrument associated with lots seven through 15 in the amount of $266,000. So I think where our office sits, our office, how we kind of view the situation is we just want to kind of rectify, rectify this as soon as possible and just kind of try to complete this.
So there's another bond available of some sort?
There is another, yeah, there's another tripart agreement for lots seven through 15.
And that's held by a different bank?
Yes.
Okay.
So it gets, once I.
Where was that located? I didn't see.
That wasn't in the packet because it wasn't really, well.
Well, that's good news.
Yes.
Feel a lot better.
Yeah. So I guess, yeah, without getting too deep into it, but we, you know, how we view it is, we need to fix the pump station soon.
Sure.
So that's our priority internally. And then we would like to use the rest of that to potentially on some of these other, maybe not, you know, not as, they're all important, but not as crucial items every day crucially.
So right now, we're just looking at the, the motion that is listed there to, I'll let Lou read it when we get to it.
Sure.
To, to approve the, the spending of the 45 as a stopgap just for the booster station.
Or, you know, that's, we would, we hope that it wouldn't obviously take, use all of it. We would obviously like, hopefully the cost is not that high and we'd like to use it on all these other items also. But that, that one to, to us is an important one.
And Mr. Oren is a principal at Hayes Engineering and he is also involved here. So he should be able to get your final bounds and get your as-bills at his cost.
We've had several discussions with that group. Their, you know, interest in helping or completing is not.
Yep.
We'll see if, I'm not sure that their, their willingness to kind of guide it to the end is, is there. So we're just trying to do the best we can.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like you may have enough money to complete the job if the town's going to complete all the engineering and then do the as-bills for them. And then, again, the town has to, in town meeting, accept the streets.
Right.
Because it adds money to the town's coffers for, you know.
Chapter 91.
State aid, based on the number of miles that are in the town. So, I mean, I can tell you, my experience of dealing with these folks, it has been excruciating. And they have, you know, every fall, we would have a meeting and we'd look over the bonds that are out there and work that hasn't been done. And they would come in every year universally and say, you know, we need to extend, we need to extend. And then, and we haven't heard from them in a long time. But I'm glad it's all built. I mean, do we have other questions from the board? Tim, do you have a question on this?
No, no question.
Jean?
No.
Lou?
Yeah, I have a few questions if you want. Just in terms of the, in terms of looking at this, so I guess, so the, the lang, so I assume, just in terms of the timeline, this letter from, you know, from Hayes Engineering, so this is like November of 2011. So I.
2021.
I'm sorry, 20, yeah, 2021, sorry.
Yep.
November of 2021. So, you know, and some time has passed. Is that, is the reason sort of just the timing? I know that there was a, the booster pump report that was done in 2022. So is that, we, we need a little more time to sort of figure out what exactly needed to be done?
So we've, not to cut you off, we've had a couple of meetings with them. It's pseudo decently difficult to kind of track the whole development team down.
And they're aware of this meeting tonight, I assume?
Yes. We spoke with them a week ago about that this is what we were going to do. A meeting that we had with them in January, February, probably February, March of 2022, after receiving that initial letter that was essentially saying that we're not going to finish it. Please, you know, receive, get the funds from the surety. We had a meeting with them in February of March. And there unfortunately was sort of a miscommunication from their side about ultimately the next steps. So when we recently spoke with them, there was, there was just a misunderstanding on their side, well, depending on whose side you are, on their side about who was going to fix the booster station. And that was, at the time even, that's what was our concern. So I think it's just kind of. Fix the booster station. And that was, at the time, even that's what was our concern. So I think it's just kind of. You know, the whole. It's been a kind of a communication. Issue, but I mean.
It seems very clear from their letter in November that they weren't planning on doing anything.
Right. And then when we spoke with them in February, March of twenty twenty. Earlier this year, they. Staff left that meeting that. We indicated to them that we were concerned about the pump station and that that was our priority. Could you please fix the pump station and then we'll use maybe the forty-five for the rest of these other items? We left the meeting as town staff that they were gonna do the pump station on, on their own dollar. Not, not with this forty-five thousand. And they left the meeting somehow thinking that we were going to do it. And then when we circled back a couple of weeks ago. Or a month ago. There was our initial meeting from last February, March, where we, I guess, came away from the meeting in different places. So. There was, I, I don't know what else to say about that, but.
So that's why we're back here. And because the line of credit expires in March, that's why we.
I mean, and when we spoke with them a couple of weeks ago. It was the same, same thing. We. It's, we don't, we're, we're not, we're not going to, we don't have the money. If we, you know, we did get, we, we wanted to make them aware that this meeting was happening, because they wanted to partake or just informational purposes. And they said, you know, go get the money and finish the work.
Okay. And just picking up from, from Jim's question a little earlier, just in terms of if so indeed, you know, the road hasn't been. Accepted, but we are doing, the town's doing plowing and they're doing trash removal and all. Is there any mechanism to, you know, to, and again. Is there any mechanism to bill the developing team for that sort of, for that sort of work? Is, I guess, is there any recourse? For work that's being done, which they should be doing?
When you, are you, when you say work, are you referring to kind of town services?
Town services, yeah. If that's out of your daily work, I just wanted.
It sort of is.
Okay.
I guess I would say. I don't know if I want to go too far into the. Into this, that piece of it, but it's difficult for the residents who live up there. Whoever are receiving all of these things than to not now. But then, I don't know how we would, it gets complicated if we would.
Yeah, I was asking more about, about a recourse against the developer. I wasn't saying about discontinuing any services that are being performed. It was more of the, is there any, is, was, is there any sort of recourse? And if you don't, you're not.
Yeah.
That, that was just a question.
Sure. I think it would probably be quite difficult. I mean, I think.
Okay.
You know, we could probably potentially, as this goes further along, we could maybe, you know, we could reach out to town council to see if there is anything else we could do.
Well, I'm glad that there is some other funds that, that appear to be available.
Sure.
I have nothing further.
That's cool.
All right. I don't have anything else to add. Tim?
I think the, the one question you asked about, so this money's being released, it's within town's control?
Not, not yet.
If it is released?
Yes.
And then who chooses the vendor for actually conducting the work? Would that be us?
Um, it would probably. Because it's sort of out of my wheel, the planning board's wheelhouse and sort of infrastructure-y. I believe that it would be the, the town engineer would probably be doing, you know, I, if I, if I wanted that booster station, I wouldn't be able to fix it. So. It would probably be the town engineer and the DPW staff, but highly likely the town engineer who's been like involved with the whole thing, but.
Great. No other questions?
Can I just add one last follow-up with that?
Go ahead.
Sure.
Just one last follow-up question. So, so this draft decision that was, that was put together, that staff put together, I believe that. This does satisfy the language from the letter from the bank, which requires specific language that. The developer has failed to, you know, in essence, perform the certain obligation. So that, this will satisfy the banks.
In our, in our opinion, yes, if there are any issues that, but.
It appears to. I, I just wanted to ask that, if that was.
I try, we try to as much as possible. We. It's written a little bit clearer or better. We, there's a little modification just to make it clear, like better lang, written. But yes, the, the spirit of it. Is in line with what they are requesting, in our opinion.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess this will be the main motion that I could have Lou read this and then we'll just approve it, if you would, Lou?
Sure. Town of Danvers Planning Board Regarding Hilltop Estates, Folly Hill Definitive Subdivision, Lots One Through Six, Sixteen to Twenty-Eight. Drawn under North Shore Bank, a cooperative bank, Two Forty-Eight Main Street, Peabody, Mass. Irrevocable Letter of Credit Number CML. One Six Zero Nine Two, dated March twelfth, twenty eighteen. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, find that Lindlewood Realty Two LLC. Has failed to complete the installation of the municipal services and ways necessary to serve the Hilltop Estates, Folly Hill. Definitive subdivision, lots one through six inclusive and sixteen through twenty-eight inclusive. As depicted in the subdivision bond estimate dated March sixth, twenty eighteen, and subsequently renewed most recently on March ninth, twenty twenty-two. We, the Danvers Planning Board, request the forty-five thousand dollar in funds from the irrevocable standby letter of credit number. CML One Six Zero Nine Two from North Shore Bank for the completion of the subdivision. Lots one through six inclusive and sixteen through twenty-eight inclusive. Signed on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, James Sears, Chair.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Just following up on this for staff. Are there other, you know, subdivisions and performance bonds out there that we should? Review to see, you know, are there. Moneys that need to be taken in or further review? But I know we've done some bond review. Normally, this time of year, people will come in seeking to. Have the bonds reviewed because the asphalt plants are closing and, you know, we're going into the winter. So you're not going to see the finished landscaping or paving and so on. Are, is this an opportunity in the next month or so to review outstanding ones so that we don't have this problem again and also. To use whatever leverage we have to get subdivisions completed, asbills done. And everything done so they can turn over the roadways to the town. I think we may have to do an inventory of, you know, some. I can think of a few.
Yeah.
That need to be, you know, tidied up.
Sure. So to answer your question. Yes, it is a good time to review these, you know, the subdivisions and kind of where they're at. I think, top of my head, there's only like one, so the four or five that are open or active. The majority. Of them in twenty, in twenty, they, from a legal or perspect, from their surety perspective, the tripart agreement. Does expire without, you know, if we don't make any amendments to it in twenty twenty-three. Our office is in the process of, yeah, creating like a master list and. I was actually gonna reach out to all of them. Um, in the first week of January with just, hey. You know, the tripart agreement ends in April or May or August, you know, how are things going? You know, what's left, that type of thing. So I was, I was planning on doing that for like. Um, I believe there's only maybe one where the tripart agreement should probably be. The timeline, the, the date, the deadline, I believe, might have passed, but we should update it. We should get the paperwork. So if we needed to get the surety. All the rest of them. The paperwork isn't, you know, it's in good, good, good order if something were to happen. Brian Cassidy, who, most of you met the other night, he's a planning tech, he's the planning technician. He's now, at least once a week, going out. To all the active subdivisions. A couple hours ago, he just sent me pictures of. One of them, you know, so it seems like. We're sort of in a good place with, I, I believe this sort of situation from where I sit is. Is, it is a decent outlier, this, this in particular, like situation. You know, there are like three or four, you know, sixty-nine North Street, the Chatham Estates just started. The, the Isle of Skye and Whipple Hill and. The other Beaver Brook, they're all. Slowly coming to the, to the finish line. I think the amount of work to finish those is. And just the paperwork and what's left and then the money is all a different, different scale and scope than, than the situation.
Yeah, this is definitely.
Yeah.
Extremely rare situation and I, I've, you know, never seen it. Except for this one.
Right.
But I mean, it does happen.
For sure.
If you get a bad economy and developers go south.
Sure.
The town gets caught holding the bag and we just got to make sure that we don't end up inheriting problems.
Right.
But, yeah, I think it'd be great to go through the exercise and look at the tripartites, which are subdivision driven. Do we also collect tripartites for, say, or bonds, if you will, for site plans and/or condominium developments?
With the site plans, when, with the site plans, we, we do, we no longer don't, we no longer do not. We took that out of section four. Um, when those, in that November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one town meeting amendment. There are a couple. From, from previous before we, from a policy standpoint, we stopped, we weren't going to allow doing that anymore. There are a couple outstanding, right? And actually, I think we'll see one of them potentially soon. Where there are, there are a couple of projects where there, there is, there is money or, you know, we received some surety.
Yeah.
And then it's like, you know, the work's done, send the money back. You'd be surprised at how many people. Give a decent amount of money to our office and then. The project's done and you know, it's like, you know, want your, I'm gonna have, it's gonna be more work for me tracking them down.
Right.
They're not knocking on the door. It's, it's, it's interesting.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
It's because we got the Aldi building.
Yeah.
We've got the new. Storage building over on.
Which one?
Well, we've got a couple of those, but the one near me on, behind the mall is.
Two Hundred Commonwealth.
Right where the swim center is.
Moving along.
Yeah.
Pretty well.
Yeah. Oh, there's a lot, there's a decent amount of construction, for sure. Yeah, I mean.
And then obviously, Maple Square looks like they've taken some windows out and that, how's that looking?
I think that, I think that they've. I think they've knocked down a couple.
Yeah.
Several buildings.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, I believe.
I didn't notice that yet.
I think.
Small ones?
Maple Street side. On, on the Maple Street side, I think.
Oh, I must have missed that.
That part of town recently, but I know that they have. At least nine of the demo permits for like buildings. And I, I believe that at. The end of last week, I believe at least like three of the, the buildings, houses, structures were.
Okay.
Taken down. So they're definitely, I think the idea is that. That block will look quite different in the next couple of weeks, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
And then obviously there. I think construction on that is probably in that February, March.
Well, that's quick.
Yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is review of the minutes. We can go one by one here. We have the minutes from July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. We've got, three of us can vote on this.
Just one quick note.
Question?
Yeah. And this is just, I, I mentioned this to Josh just prior. On page three of the July twenty-six minutes, there's a reference to. Patrick Mallon with a question marks after it. I think it should just be Patrick Mallon, M L L O N. Is the spelling of the name. He was with the Forty-two Summer Street property owner. And that was all.
Any other questions or comments, additions or deletions on the minutes for July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. The next minutes would be for. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any questions from the board on those minutes or revisions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. Any other information from staff as to our next meeting and. We're not meeting till January, correct?
That's right.
And the next meeting date is?
I'll have to send that. Internally, there was a.
So it's the second Tuesday in January, right?
Probably, yeah. I was just trying to.
January tenth is our next meeting.
Yeah, internally, we were, yeah, we were bouncing around a, a master schedule, but I could, I could send out an email shortly about. That schedule for twenty twenty-three.
Okay. And. Will you be our liaison or?
Yeah, probably, yes, probably, yes.
And Brian also?
Sure. I mean, I'll probably put him on most emails.
But will he staff the meetings with you or just?
Probably not.
Not yet, or?
Probably not.
Okay.
But not really my decision or call, but.
Okay.
Don't know. I guess, TBD, I guess, but.
All right.
I think I might be your person for, if you're, I might be your person, but we'll see.
No, that's great. I was just.
Yeah, yeah.
Clarifying.
Informational, yeah.
His exact role as to.
Right.
Vis a vis the board, what, what his.
I think like, I think certainly it kind of like macro level. Like, probably like big zoning things and just like big pro, you know. He'll probably, I'm sure he'll be involved and he'll probably be CC'd on a lot of the email, you know, emails and correspondence, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just, that's how I see it, but if he thinks differently, we'll, we'll find out.
Okay. Great. And then, yeah, it was a great to have the meeting last week.
Sure.
Kind of meet the, the staff and kind of, you know, personally meet people and. Do other members have any questions for staff or anything else they'd like to just address before the last meeting of the year, which is today? Lou?
Just one thing, just because I was not able to fully participate in the meeting last week.
Sure.
I think it would be maybe good at some point if I could, you know, maybe stop over and meet the new.
Who's recorded?
Planning director. Yeah, was it?
I don't think it was recorded, but we do have minutes, but yes. To meet the new plan director, is that what you were saying?
At some point, yeah.
I believe his first day for informational is January ninth.
And that's fine. It'll, at some point, then. Sure. Okay, good. Nothing further.
Awesome. All right. If there's nothing further, then I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.